And we are returning from executive session to public forum. If anyone would like to join us, we'll move on to our agenda. Thank you. A report of our student representatives.
So, the big happening at BMR right now is our midterm exams. Those just concluded today with students' G-period exams. And the way those worked is every day, two exams run. First, A-B Monday, C-D Tuesday, E-F Wednesday. And then today was just our G-period. And if students, this actually started a couple of years back. If students bring a note from a packet, they'll actually be dismissed after they take their exams, which has been a big help for students. Because really, when you're doing exams, you're not doing much in your classes anyways, besides just reviewing. So for students to be able to go home, take the time to study, ease off after a tough day, it's really been a helpful advantage for students. And we're certainly glad they're done. And now we're moving on into whatever comes next. And those could be the last exams for those seniors who are exempt from their finals, which is exciting news. And as always, being student representatives, showing the full student opinion of the school. We've had a couple bumps with, we had two bathroom doors removed to prevent vaping, which has been a problem at BMR for all students. It's just not really something, definitely not something we want in our schools. So it was kind of to make sure that students weren't doing this. Unfortunately, due to some privacy conflict, we, one of the doors has been reinstalled. The other remains down. And it's just kind of, it's a tough disagreement because students don't like the infringement, but students also certainly understand that you can't have that in school. It's against the law and it's just not something you want in your learning environment. And some-
Sorry. What doors did they remove?
Stall doors?
No, no. The doors like to the entrance-
From the hallway into the bathroom?
Yeah. And then, um-
Righty.
One has been reinstalled. The other, you can't see through because of a wall on the turnaround. And then, we've had a cut-through installed, which I believe is for handicap regulations. It's canvas and fiberglass below, lower ceiling. And it's open to let seniors through for senior privilege. One concern of the students is that for morning meetings, students have to go around the building. But this is being worked out and it's, you have to give and take with obviously these updates. And Eric with sports?
So, sports are doing well right now, winter sports. Basketball continues, obviously. I know that there are some track athletes that are moving forward to, is it states?
Districts and states. Yep. And we have a couple of invitational meets. We, boys actually, good news, boys won the DVC, the Dual Valley Conference. The indoor track team has never actually won the conference, so this was a major accomplishment. And it's actually, it was a very nail-biter because the results were actually counted wrong and it was displayed, that Sutton one, by a large margin. But after it was gone back and corrected, BMR boys pulled the victory and we're bringing a banner home.
Yeah.
Columbia!
Yeah. And then we also started the stampede at BMR for the basketball games. And this is a new super, superfan club for the students. It's really run by the students. It's facilitated by Ms. Tothsey, the athletic director. And it's just, it's a good way for kids to come and it really has boosted school spirit so far. They've had some themed nights so far. Of course, it features Charlie the Charger, which is the new Charger mascot that the senior class last year donated. And I think we're kind of working out some things with possibly a pep band, which could be really cool. It's really, it's transformed the gym during basketball games and it's, you can, it's a noticeable difference. And then for NHS, the annual Empty Bowl Dinner is coming up on February 11th. Still see me if you need tickets. And that's a great night for the NHS and a great night for the community as well.
For another one of our schools' organizations, Student Council. As we've kept you updated, the Book of Excellence, to apply for the Council of Excellence Award, you either get rated bronze, silver, or gold based on hitting certain requirements. That's a lot of work, but it's wrapping up with only a couple of things left to put in. And it'll be submitted for review to the Massachusetts Association of Student Council's State Executive Board, which actually will feature Eric as our central district president. He was elected to that position last year. And for band, Winter Guard, Winter Percussion, Jazz Band, Woodwind Choir, and our Brass Choirs continue rehearsal. We've got a date, Winter Percussion and Winter Guard Home Show, which is always a splendid event. We encourage everyone to go because it raises a lot of money through both concessions, 50-50 raffles. And also, it's just fantastic to support our schools' ensembles. It's really nice to see them out there and also see other schools, just kind of what we're accomplishing in New England, a lot with band, especially with our national title we took this year. And that will be February 27th at 4:00 PM at BMR. And the Jazz Band has been visited once by Paul Alberta, who helps us from King Philip and his two assistants. And they'll be coming again this Friday to help us. And that's a really important development to help us get better for districts. And with the senior class.
So, the Matchmaker fundraiser was sent back to the company, who's going to process it and then send everybody the results. That's a fundraiser for the seniors. In other news, we're also planning the senior class trip, the prom and the banquet. Where, we also have a few other things in the works for the end of the year, possibly a hypnotist show, we'll see. And yeah, that's about it for the seniors.
Do you have a destination on the trip?
We have some ideas. We'll see.
You're not giving them up?
Not yet. Not yet.
How many days?
Sixty-nine school days.
I was just going to ask.
One hundred and eleven days in general. I did the math.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I actually have one other question. Empty Bowl, it's February 11?
February 11.
We have a meeting.
So are we going to move, I know someone said something about moving our meeting-
Well, the, the timing works though. The Empty Bowl's what, five to seven?
Yeah, I've been where it's at.
Okay. So still here at seven?
I think it's seven dollars a ticket.
All right. Any questions, Ms. Vannock? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And moving on, Consent Agenda A. We have warrants, use of facilities, which we have one request. And minutes of meetings that were emailed to us. Do we want to do Consent Agenda A together or break it up? The use of facility request is a dance studio that would like to pay the user fees to, the facility fees, to use the Millville Elementary School on May 20th and 21st for a dance recital. And they're requesting to use the auditorium, the music room, and possibly the conference room on Saturday only. Auditorium is Friday and Saturday. And they included their insurance information and they're requesting custodians and following all of the protocol that we usually have.
Do the fees cover the custodians? There's no additional cost with that?
The custodian's there on Friday night anyway.
Right.
So, I honestly, the fees are not listed on here.
Okay. No, I don't need to know.
Is the custodian addition to the fee?
Yes.
So they pay the custodian.
Okay.
So I'm looking for a motion for-
Motion to move Consent Agenda A.
Consent Agenda A, made by Jane. Is there a second? Second by Bill. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? So moved. And moving on to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Vannock. Before we get into our presentations, I just wanted to let folks know that I will be out hosting supper in all of our schools. And an opportunity to meet with parents, students, staff, town residents, anyone who is interested in discussing education in our district. And we will promote the dates. I'll be at the Hartnett Middle School on Monday, February 8th at 6:00 PM. And at the high school on Wednesday, February 10th at 6:30. And at AFM and JFK Elementary Schools on Monday, March 7th at 5:30. And at Millville Elementary on Monday, March 7th at 6:30. And it's an opportunity for us to partake of a good meal, provided by our food service staff. And I will give a quick overview of our initiatives and what is happening at the state level. And a discussion of what we have on the, on the horizon here in the district. And then a chance to entertain questions and concerns and comments and feedback from whoever is there. And this is a terrific opportunity for everyone to have a chance to be heard and for me to listen and find out what is on folks' mind. And so I look forward to those dates and we will have those up and advertised. We are finishing, this is our third meeting of FY17 budget and presentations. And we have with us Mrs. Braverman to give us a recap on special education. And then Mrs. Brown and Mrs. DeSai and Dr. Hawe for the elementary presentations for what we need in addition for next year. So, without further ado, Mrs. Braverman.
So you all have the special education FY17 information in front of you. And what I did was I took Mr. Chaplin's recommendation from the last time I was here. He had requested to look at a trend, the FY15, 16, and 17. So what I did for tonight's presentation is to break it into those three columns for you to look at. So, I know you've had time to look it over. Are there any questions?
So, just from reading this, we're adding a wheelchair van? Is that, with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And that almost comes out to be, what do you call it, neutral cost, based on the savings?
Okay. Oh, because we're going to be pulling someone back, is that?
Right.
Okay.
Didn't we take one out last year?
Put one in or we did something. It's come up before. I thought that's where we added it.
But we never did.
I thought it was out of our budget, though.
So, this is the cost to purchase the van, then?
This is the cost to purchase the van.
And how about the driver? Where does that fall in the budget?
In speaking with the superintendent and with the business office, that is a driver that we use regularly now, so it wouldn't increase.
One question. I just noticed the subs. I know I, students with IEPs need to have annual meetings. I was looking at the trend from 15 to 16 to 17?
Mm-hmm.
From 63 to 55 down to 28? What's such a drop? How is it less than half what it was two years ago?
From what my understanding is, in the past, when team chairs were scheduling meetings, it was very much at the will of the parents. And so that created perhaps not the most efficient way to use our subs. We may hire a sub to come in at 10:00 in the morning, maybe have an 11 o'clock meeting, the 11 o'clock parent not show up, and the sub having been hired for the day, or at least a half a day. What I have asked the team chairs to do is to be a little bit more efficient in scheduling those appointments, keeping in mind the needs of the parent. But perhaps giving them the Tuesday or Thursday and having them pick a time. So that way, we can load our subs in the building and use them consecutively throughout the day. That will minimize the cost on our subs. So for example, just the other day, I received a phone call from a team chair who had a sub and wanted to know if that sub was needed anywhere else in the district because we had some no-shows with parents. So what I am asking team chairs to do is to call parents before those team meetings, remind parents that they had agreed to the time, confirm that they're coming, and then go ahead and secure the sub.
And not so much for us here, but for the people at home. Can you just talk about the out-of-district? I know you're not going to, I'm not looking for details and names, but just in general, where are the kids going and how much money is tied up there? Because I know it's a big number.
Yes. It, it's the major portion of the special ed budget. And we have 22 students in out-of-district settings. Those stu, those decisions are team decisions. They're driven by the special ed teams. And when I looked at those students and what those needs are in those IEPs, they were really prudent decisions that were made on behalf of those teams. Mr. Wosniak, the last time I was here, talked about how there are situations where the school system couldn't possibly educate the students and meet all of their needs. And those 22 students represent what he was talking about. Now, out of those 22 students, seven of them are in a private school setting. And of course, the private school tuition, when you look at, for seven students, it being what it is, compared to the 15 students that we have in the collaborative. The collaborative is a least restrictive environment. It allows students to participate in a sub-separate programming, but typically in a public high school. The collaboratives rent space within different districts around the community. So it allows a student to have as close to a typical school experience as possible. You're welcome. Last time I was here, there was a question about the transportation and where BIKO was with setting the rate. I spoke with Arlene, the executive director, this morning. I went down to BIKO. That rate is not public as of right now. It is in the hand of their attorneys. They're looking over the contract and the documents. It will be made available very, very shortly. But she was pretty comfortable with what Wen had shared two weeks ago in estimating the percentage that we feel it'll come in.
So where did you, where is this number?
So, that is the transportation for our out-of-district.
What percentage did you use?
It looks like it's the same number.
It, what, yeah. I use the same number because until I actually get a percentage, until I see it in writing, I don't want to underestimate and then have to come back to the committee because something fell through. So I, I level funded it, but expecting that this to go forth.
And then the wheelchair van is not subtracted from the transportation in the district yet? That number would change too if we do make a purchase?
Yes.
Or did you already subtract it out?
I haven't subtracted it out until I know that it'll be funded.
Okay.
But, but then it's in here twice.
It is. That's my question.
Well, the, the numbers up, up top are basically an estimate. You're, you're hoping that because we have the van, those numbers will be less.
So it's one or the other?
Right.
Yeah.
That we will be able to eliminate a route. And more importantly than eliminating a route, will allow, we will be able to allow a student a full participation in some of our community experiences that we offer other students.
That'll impact approximately, how many kids in the wheelchair van?
The van that came out for me to look at, I called several companies. One company came out, gave me a demonstration, and it can seat five. And that includes also having a parrot in what they call a jump seat, so that way there's also that extra person.
If it's five wheelchairs?
It'll sit four wheelchairs and one person on the jump seat, so five people.
And right now, those, those kids are in a Tellstone van?
Yes.
That we're paying for, obviously? Okay.
Yeah, that's it. This is the asterisk at the bottom, the highlighted portion that she notes that. It'll come out of that other.
Yep. Thank you. This is, this is great.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. I think that the feedback I received last time was really helpful in putting together tonight's document.
Thank you very much. Next, we have our elementary principals. I guess all three of you could come up, since a lot of what they are going to talk about is, is very comparable.
Redundant? Some more?
Thank you for having us. We always look forward to talking about what's going on in our buildings and also to address some of the needs. So thank you for the opportunity. I'll start?
Sure.
Okay. So as you know, this is the first year that we have a principal now at Kennedy and one at Maloney.
Me.
And we've also started the co-teaching initiative. This is our first year. I, I do want to share that teachers are working extremely hard and working together and planning. And we look forward to coming together. We've actually met throughout the year just to talk about the strengths of this model. And most importantly, we're finding that we're better able to meet the needs of students. We need certainly to take a look and talk more about what changes we think that we need to make. But we are moving forward with this co-teaching model and we're very excited about that. Also, we've implemented a new math program this year for all grades, Invision's Math Program. And these are, this is true for all elementary buildings. It's a research-based math program aligned to common course standards. What we are finding is that the more we work with this program, the longer we teach it, we're really finding that our students are becoming more engaged. And, and the beauty of this is that they are using math vocabulary, working together in groups to really talk about math, not just do math. And the, the technology component to this program has, has been a great support. So we're continuing with this program. We're continuing with some of the professional development for teachers. And we expect that as we move forward and our students get another year of this program under their belts and our teachers do, that we will see more of an impact in a positive way.
I can also piggyback on that and let everyone know that we've had some great experiences with teachers, meeting with parents, leading them through the parent access and showing what kind of resources are available there. So that's something we need to, as we continue with this program, have that exposure because I was sitting in with one parent and she was worried, she didn't know how to explain everything to her child when they're doing the homework. And we showed them with a click of a button, the online resource takes that onus off the parents. And she looked visibly relieved because this is a different style of teaching math than what most of us grew up with. And it's so effective that the teachers are saying, they're getting it, they're getting it. And these are like some complex concepts that the children are able to show success and the pride that they feel. And so you can see that consistency across the board. Everybody has a math focus wall. The students can access that at any time. And there's a video component with the lesson, there are parent resources that you can put up there. Teachers can also individualize that parent access. I wanted to share that with you from the last time we spoke. It's coming on nicely.
And I, and I think another strength of this program is that it offers various strategies to problem solve. So what may work for me may not be as effective for another student. So students are exposed to a variety of ways to problem solve. And it, it's really, I have to say, it's just amazing to walk into classrooms and seeing the level of engagement that we now see during math instruction.
And the conversations.
And the conversations.
Back and forth.
And it has been a tremendous learning curve for teachers as well. So I really commend all of them for their commitment and their hard work on this. Lot of, lot of discussions among teachers at grade levels, so it's, it's really been, it's been good to see. Also, the literacy initiative continues with Teachers for Teachers this year. This is the third year for teachers in grades three through five. At, at the Kennedy and Maloney schools, we have very proudly opened up our leveled book room. As a matter of fact, one of the consultants shared that this was one of the most beautiful book rooms she has seen. We have done so much work and committed so much time. Teachers are, our literacy teachers, Mrs. Torby and Mrs. Tasic. And I also want to publicly thank Mrs. Sherry Beland, who I think has spent more time in our building than I have. She has just, she's been there every day. And the book room is up and running. And right now, what we're doing is we're taking a very close look at the books that we have ordered, what we have and what we feel that we need. So, we'll be, we're spending this year and next year, especially as the new science standards roll out, we'll be taking a look at nonfiction and, and those resources that we then need to purchase too for our book room.
Do you have budgetary numbers for those?
Vivian? It's, it's, what I'm looking at is $35,000 total.
That's past tense, though.
That was last year.
Oh, last year. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
I guess, I guess I'm a, when I, when I look at this agenda, I guess I'm a bit confused because I thought we were here to discuss budgetary issues with regard to the schools as we did with the special ed lady last time. And she came back with that summary of the expenses. I understand these programs, but I thought these meetings were more about how much as opposed to what they bring to the curric, I guess we can have that discussion. But I thought we'd do it in form of value as to what it was, what it's going to be and what you need from a financial perspective.
Sure.
Because usually, I don't know, my experience with dealing with budgets is you actually get budgetary numbers.
They're on here. They are, they're just on the chart.
The GLs.
They are on here.
Yeah.
It's just broken down into-
Needs. Actually, we, we can at this point, if you would like, just move directly into the literacy piece. Yes. So-
Can I, can I, can I, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Just around the census? If you can, can each of you just break down the numbers that I have here, like the total number of classes?
Yeah. How many-
How many classes for this, like, grade three, 91? Is that four classes?
But, but hold on. These are this year's numbers?
This year's.
And I think Millville's next year?
Which is fine.
I give next year.
Okay. So long as we all know that.
Just so, if we can go in there, you might have already did this. I was in a coma most of the fall, so, you know. Oh, wait, it'll kill me to say it.
I can't believe you just said that.
That was a joke, people. That was a joke.
I can't believe you just said that.
Some people say you still are, but it's okay.
Just quickly for me, just kind of go through that if you could. That'd be awesome.
I'll start with the current kindergarten. We have 105 students. Hard to project for next year because it's similar to last year. We had, I think, 77 for the census and we ended up with 105. So we have roughly 75, 77 for the census. This year, I'm expecting about 105 for next year.
But that's five classes?
105 is five classes, correct?
Five classes.
Okay.
You have five sections right now. How many, have you, how many?
Pockets have people picked up?
Yeah.
About 35.
Okay.
But again, it, it goes through August.
Oh, yeah.
And we get a lot of move-ins over the summer, especially at JFK. So anticipating will be about over 100 students next year. Current first grade, we have 87 students. It's five sections. And so that would be next year's second grade. And I'm anticipating, given those numbers, I would probably go for next year's second grade to be four sections. And our current second grade has 104 students.
Five, it's five classes, right?
Yes. Five sections. Right now, I have five sections, K1 and 2.
Okay.
And at Maloney, currently, I have five sections in third grade and I anticipate that that will remain the same for next year. And at grades four and five, I have four sections each and I anticipate that that will remain the same.
Good. So for Millville, what we have right now, we opened at about 267 upon arrival in July. When I arrived at Millville, right now, we have 278 students. Our norm has continued to climb throughout the year. That's for this year. The projections you see in front of you are for next year. I rolled the grades up and handled it that way. We have two preschool, integrated preschool classrooms and one self-contained. We have one kindergarten. The census had 20 on it to start and we already had three people pick up packets that weren't even on the census. So we've also received a couple of school choice requests for kindergarten for next year. And our numbers are expected to continue to climb between now and August. But as of the time I produced this report for the packet, it was at 23. And I would say right now, we're at about 24, 25.
So you're projecting still two sections?
Still two sections for kindergarten next year. That'd be correct. Grade two, uh, grade one for next year will have 32 students, two sections. Grade two, 37 students, that'll have two sections. Grade three, we opened this year at 19. We have 22 right now. And that number holds steady. I would anticipate that being one section for the 22. Grade four is at 46. And at grade five, we project 28. And both grade four and five have two sections.
Thank you. That was helpful.
So that 28 is going to be in two sections?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, at this point. We are getting a number of requests again for school choice. And it would be expected that between now and the time that we go to open, those numbers are going to continue to go up. I'm actually surprised at the number of phone calls that are coming in, request, making such a request. At this time of year, I didn't expect that. I would have thought it would have been a little later into the spring, to be fair. But they're happening now. So, we take the calls, we take the information, we, you know, give them what they request and let them know, you know, we're happy to provide tours and any other additional information as the process moves on.
Paul, where are they coming from? They come, you don't have to say the towns, but is there?
All around us.
Really?
Yeah, all the surrounding communities, valley communities, so.
It doesn't take long for the word to spread.
No, I know, I know, it's a good thing.
How happy the kids are, yeah.
So, I mean, just, just for what it's worth, I know the grade five at twenty-eight right now looks, looks low.
But that class has always been one that we've had to tend to differently. I think we all, most of us know that. And they vote, they actually started the year at thirty, correct? It was two sections, because it was?
They, they actually opened it about, it was twenty-nine, and then one student moved, so.
Okay.
Uh, we're at twenty-eight. I do expect, again, just because of the phone calls we're getting, these numbers to go up, not down. Just, again, I can only work in what I have for data at the time. So, at the time I produced this, this is where we're at. In turn, to the point about literacy that was raised earlier, for us at Millville, we did replicate the ten thousand dollars in the budget from last year to this year. Our entire budget is needs-based, but also, it's a replication of what was put in before. So, there's no increase in terms of a dollar amount and a line item. What was in there last year is in there this year. What you're seeing is, is real numbers, real math, and it's just a replication. So, if it's paint and it's five hundred dollars for paint, it was five hundred dollars for paint last year, it's a thousand dollars for paint this year.
But this actually says we spent ten thousand dollars on books?
We did spend ten thousand dollars on books last year, that is correct. The books that we identified and picked up, you know, that's what we could afford, and that's what we got. We have had a massive amount of support from our Parents Association, MASPa, as well as others to help us kind of continue our book drive, as well as fill in areas of need. So, different genres that were a little lower or a specific level, like a B or a C reading level. We, we've utilized the funds in additional contribution recently to offset and fill in gaps. And this is really being done ahead of the ten thousand dollars that we've replicated, because it just, we started with very little. And so, we're kind of working from the ground up. And I have to say, to, to the point that was raised by Mrs. Brown and as well as Mrs. Desai, Mrs. Allard has done an incredible job. She's been a strong advocate for literacy, has gone to MASPa, has gone to a number of different meetings in the evening with me, and really done a great job championing and advocating literacy and reading itself as, as our reading specialist. The bookroom downstairs was open, same, give or take, right around the same timeframe. All our books were upstairs, and we decided to split them and put one downstairs and one up, so that grades K through three had access on their level, and they didn't have to climb stairs with some of the little ones. And then, grade four and five have their bookroom upstairs as well. So, it's coming along, and we're, we're really proud of the work that's been done thus far and look forward to doing more.
Actually, you sort of walked into a little bit. I, I mean, I understand it, but I think not everyone does completely. Can you just back up a little bit and explain what is a leveled book? And the, how's the bookroom different from the library? I mean, again, I understand, but I think a lot of people may be a little fuzzy on that.
Yeah, I want to speak to this with the work with Tammy and Claire.
Back it up a little bit.
Well, as you know, the Literacy Initiative with the Teachers for Teachers consultants, they came in, and there's a whole method with the Reader's Workshop and how you set that up. And I know we had that discussion when you came to Millville the first time, it was like, what do you mean? And the whole point is with leveled readers, you have different levels of reading, starting with A all the way up to W, don't quote me, right? And so, teachers would need a variety of, they should be able to grab a bin at a certain level of reading for use in the classroom, but it can't be the same book. It has to be a variety of, say, twenty different books at that level to have a choice for free reading. Teachers are also in their classroom, developing their own leveled libraries and creating mini bookbags with the children where you select, a teacher might select a book because they want to either review something or strengthen a skill or challenge a student with their reading fluency and comprehension. A student gets a choice, there are a variety of, three or four different books in the child's bookbag. Some of the leveled reading books from our bookroom can be used for that purpose, because they can take out a, and get a fresh bunch of books. When we talked with Tammy and Claire, they recommended creating roughly as a start, because we really had to start the leveled bookroom, roughly two bins per level, all the way up with a variety of fiction and nonfiction. But we realized quickly last year, in both buildings, a gaping hole with nonfiction literature just wasn't there. And so, I know when I was at Millville last year, I spent a, a good two, three thousand dollars out of principals' funds, not only to purchase leveled books, but for the teachers' classrooms, because they didn't even have enough. So, there's different kinds of areas. Once the bookroom is up and running, which we finally done with everybody's help and tremendous amount of work, then you can start refining it. And you can go with, for instance, we want to pick leveled books for certain science topics, or certain genres, or certain authors. And that's the kind of thing we have to start. When you look at this, create a five-year plan, I think, really, as you move forward, of how are you going to build on this? Did that, did I capture?
It answers the question, but it doesn't answer the question. Because if I'm a, if I'm a person out in the community, and I say, okay, they, we've just spent ten thousand in one school, fifteen thousand in another school, plus what the, the principals have given from their funds, plus what the MASPa and BIPo and are giving from their funds, and we're building these great leveled learning, you know, my child who reads at this level can come in and have twenty choices from this book that's tied to the teacher, that's tied to this whole thing, why do I have a library?
A library is a time for students to go in and have free choice and free selection of interest.
But it's free selection in the reading room, too.
Um, not necessarily. Some of the leveled readers, the teacher is going to guide them towards a certain reading at their level or guide them to the extension. The other thing, when we talked with the book representatives who came to meet with us, you could have two books on, say, a social studies topic. And on the surface, everything is the same, yet you have two different levels and you're addressing the same underlying concept. So, no longer is a point that children can look around and figure, they're, they're all reading the same book, but it's, it's done in such a beautiful manner that they're getting the same concept at a level that they can have independent reading.
If I could.
Sure.
So, the, the, the reading levels themselves go A to Z. They run from ages four all the way up to about eleven plus. A lot of the work that we utilize is in the area of assessment. So, Funtis and Pennell Assessment is something that's quite common. Tammy and Claire have given us a rubric and a, a template to follow that, you know, we have to follow when we're trying to assess, as a reading specialist or a teacher, for that matter, the reading that's taking place with the young person. And that, that level kind of determines what's, where they are in terms of their instructional ability as well as their independent ability. I think that's, that's a key here, and when you're talking about the reading room, finding books that are high interest, you know, and on level with their abilities. DRAs can be put in and produced. So, there's a lot of data that can be utilized out of this reading room and out of these books, a number of which we, we utilized through Scholastic in the last round. Other programs out there include Level Literacy Initiative, you know, LLI, and, and other resources can be brought to bear. But we're looking at their abilities, their skill development, and that's where a reading room really kind of becomes bigger, to be, to answer your question more directly. When you go to the Library Media Center, you have technology, you have the smartboard, you have computers, you have books as well, of all sorts. And it's not necessarily aligned to this type of instruction that the teacher is looking to perform. And, and especially in the early years, K through five. And we're really, I, I'm proud of the faculty and staff and the work they've done. I'm proud of the permanent substitutes who've also stepped in and really done a great job. Mrs. Stearman and Mr. Landry have done incredible work helping Mrs. Allard and Claire work hand and glove to kind of get the downstairs ready to go. And our upstairs looks good, too. So, we got, we got more to do, but I hope that kind of answers your, your question in a more direct way.
Well, I, I think the end result of a book closet, too, if used effectively, is that students are able to decide if this book is a just-right book for them or not a just-right book for them, and it's guided by the teacher. So, if a teacher takes out, you know, level C books and puts five level C books in front of the child, depending on the age, that when they do go to the library, they're able to identify what books are good for them or just right for them, instead of choosing more difficult books.
And I'm not disagreeing with any of that, because I've seen the benefit of, of that program and those programs and that, you know, sparking interest again in reading. My question is the library end of it. Nobody has made a good argument of, you know, we talked about the middle school and the high school, we need this library media specialist, we need these, you know, we need those people to run. Nobody's, nobody's beefing up that end of the argument. Nobody's, I don't, not understanding if reading is becoming focused through a reading room and, and leveled readers, this whole concept of enjoyable free time reading in the library and the need for library media specialists. Because there's a lot of money here, there's a lot of money here for reading specialists, reading specialists, reading specialists. Do we still need library media specialists?
Yes, I'd say, I, I was thinking, like, the common core now is a lot of nonfiction. And so, for example, if you're learning, I don't know, say, like Desert habitats, you would go up to the reading room and say, okay, here's a level C book, here's a level H, and here's an M.
Right.
On habitats. And each kid could select a book at their level, and they could all read it, and they could all participate in something about habitats. And, and that's the beauty of it. I think the library is more pleasure, it's more self-selected, whereas the, the reading room is a little more focused on.
To, if I may, to the point you're raising, as well as Mrs. Greenstein, she makes a good point. Fourth grade today was working on a just-right book, and kids had a number of different levels in the room in fourth grade, but they were working on their just-right book. And the teacher was moving around, asking, you know, key questions, characterization, conflict climax. Quickly off the top of my head, a lot of the conversation was around details in the story and characterization, for instance, as it relates to their just-right book. And the, the books were very different for the kids in the room, but they were of their interest in what was, what was key. They also got to, you know, bring them from that class to the next class. So, when they went to the reading specialist, they did more discussion about what was happening in the story and supporting details and kind of drawing that out in a writing prompt when they came back to the fourth grade classroom.
And I, and I think actually you, you raise a really great point, because when a child walks into the, I mean, you can look at all of these books here, and standing here, you have no idea what level any of these books are. So, maybe we need to rethink about how we group our books in the library.
There you go.
Thank you.
Excellent point.
So, just one other question. You, you've talked about the money you've spent. Is this money appropriated in next year's budget as well?
I have not allotted, allotted any money to purchase additional books for the leveled bookroom because we purchased a lot of books. We really need to take the time to see what we have, use what we have, and determine what it is we need. So, to go out there and buy more books for the sake of buying books didn't make sense to us at this point.
And for?
And we share the same bookroom, so that would be.
We're in a different place, Millville. Uh, we have a lot of, as she mentioned, a lot of nonfiction that had already been purchased. So, we're, we need to bring in more fiction to kind of supplement those areas and kind of get our bookroom where it needs to be moving forward. And there's some areas that have wonderful materials, and there's some that are just a little thinner. And Claire has been instrumental in trying to guide, guide us through that process with Mrs. Allard.
So, do we have ten thousand put aside?
Yes, we do, in ours. So, Millville is, does have that in there.
Is that in, is that in here?
Yes, it is. It is in that GL.
That's not next year, John. That's not next year.
What about for next year?
Yes.
It's in here for next year as well?
I replicated the budget, correct.
That's this year's. We don't have that yet.
Absolutely.
We don't have next year's.
We do not have next year's.
So, what you're telling me is, you're just verbally telling me it's in next year's budget, but I don't actually have a heart. I'm just wondering.
No, no, Ms.
Because I thought we were talking about next year's budget. That's what this meeting was about. But I don't have next year's budget.
But he already said he replicated what was.
So, this year, whatever's in here is whatever is going to be in next year's budget.
So, through the chair, Mr. Wozniak, yes, that is exactly what I've done. And what I plugged in this year, instructional supplies, for instance, if you go to that line.
Okay, I'll go, I'll go through the chair, too.
No, no.
If, if this, so, this is, might as well be marked for as next year's proposed budget. Is that what I'm understanding? It's going to be level funded?
On the bottom of his presentation, there are additional items.
I understand that these additional items are fifty-two thousand dollars and the like.
Right.
But in order to evaluate from a financial perspective, what Jane was saying with regard to comparisons between the reading programs, I have to go into this. Drag the numbers out from last year and add, if I want to find out and do something similar to what we asked our special ed director to do in this form, I would have to do that myself at this point. Is that, am I understanding, I, this is the first year go-around, usually when I do budget.
Well, I'm going to be honest with you, John, usually we have this from every, and we go through it line by line. Us, eight, we do. This year, it's not being given to us that way. I'm going, I'm, I shouldn't assume, but I'm assuming it's Alan's directive on, to his administrators, on how he, they brought us to budget.
Because I've done, I've, I've done budgets in different capacities. And usually, when our department brings me a budget, they bring me numbers. They don't say, this is what we want to do, and they put on a presentation about the virtues and give thanks to various people who have assisted them with regard to the progression of their goals in their department.
But there's also a fine line, John, everyone needs to understand the need. We had this discussion the first time Loretta was here, and if she just brought you these numbers, would you even understand out of district tuition? Or there, there, we need clarity.
Well, no, I wouldn't.
So, when we sit and talk about it by ourselves, we need to understand it. They are the ones bringing it to us.
I hear his presentation, and I hear seventy-five percent of his presentation as to what he hopes to bring to his program and what great strides they've made, which is fine. But those aren't numbers, I can't.
But it's important for when we do get the numbers on February eleventh.
When we do get the numbers.
Yes, Alan's giving us.
My understanding is this is a budgetary meeting.
Alan is giving us this on February eleventh. Am I incorrect in saying that?
No, that's correct. And to, to Mr. Wozniak's point, we have taken these three meetings to go through and present need based upon where we are this year, what we see next year. The, the February eleventh meeting, I will present the draft budget in total for FY seventeen. And with, with Wen Cobb's terrific expertise and analysis. The, the, the bit of the handicap that we work under is, one, Wen's now the fourth person in four years to produce a budget. And so, the analysis portion of how we, we look at things is what we, we miss when we have that many different eyes, year to year to year.
I understand.
And I know what you want, you will definitely get with all detail and, and, and you'll get it in the packet the Tuesday prior to the eleventh.
In all fairness to the three folks that are sitting at this table and to all the folks that are watching on television, I don't know, maybe it's just me. I'm not an educator, okay?
Which is even more of a reason we need to understand what they're asking for.
But you need to, you need to tie what you're asking for to the number that's going to cost to bring it to me. And I don't know, I don't understand why it's more beneficial to bring the presentation as to what they want here and then bring the number later. I, it just seems simpler and more compact to me to have the numbers in front as we had with special ed and do it all in one fell swoop. I, I, it's just, maybe it's just me.
No, because I, I agree with John to a certain extent. I, I like the fact that we're getting updated on what the, the schools have done. I like the highlight pieces and the, the emphasis to say, we need to continue. This has been a good, you know, initiative, we need to continue this. But I guess I, too, was looking, this little section that is on each one, this needs to be the emphasis. So, in other words, we need to continue the program, we need to maintain the dollars that we've had there, and we need to bring in these reading specialists, we need to.
Which I think we should really let them continue. This is the first time we've actually seen Mrs. Brown all year. Dr. Hough, he's been at some of our meetings. I, I think getting this recap of their, their year and, and what they've done and what they want to do is important for us. So, I think we need to let them continue, and we, we haven't even gotten past the census.
But in terms of, can I say, one, one thing? And I highly ever do interrupt anybody.
Please, go ahead.
Make sure that camera goes right on Wendy right now. What everyone's saying is right, because I think this, these are, I love these presentations, because it is a check-in, it's kind of state of the state of each school and each, each department that come here. I think for next year, let's have those earlier. You know what I mean? I, I think that's what everyone's saying. Earlier around, hey, this is what's going on. And then, when we get here, then we're getting numbers and.
And that'll be the case.
You know?
That's right.
It's good, I mean, you're right.
Because you know what, I, I'm, I'm looking at this and I'm, I'm lost.
Because this is.
And I'm sure somebody opposed.
Just as much for us.
It's not rocket science.
This is also for the public.
Correct.
Well, I think, I think what's important is that we understand the needs. Yes, we understand the needs, but usually, we get, while you're sharing the needs, we're looking at the numbers. And I think that's where the disconnect is. So, we appreciate you coming and giving the presentation, because it's very, very important. And just to understand the needs, you know, when we get down the line and we need to. And just to understand the needs, you know, when we get down the line and we need to do some cutting, we need to be able to look at numbers and really define those, you know, see where those needs are. So, thank you. We appreciate your presentation and we look forward to those numbers very shortly by, by schools so that we can really break down the needs that you're sharing with us right now.
But we'd like you to continue.
Please continue.
I definitely want you to continue.
We haven't gone past census.
No, sorry.
So, the point I was making, if I may, the, under instructional supplies, which would be in the GL line you were asking about, that, that's where I was trying to guide you. If you look at instructional supplies, I believe that line last year said $13,500. In there was the $10,000 for the books that we're looking to put in. The hope and sincere expectation is that that would make us whole in terms of completing out all the work and all the books that are needed, not only for the reading room downstairs, but also upstairs because we're talking about all the grades getting what they need and not just K to three on the downstairs, but also upstairs as well. So, I, I wanted to kind of help you with the general ledger to understand where in the ledger you could look.
What page is it?
I don't have it.
That's not.
Oh, no, if you're going to help me with it, you got to show me.
It's not in this one.
It's not in.
That will be a question for. That will be a question for when.
All right.
When we sit down to do it.
For the guidance of.
No, but I wanted you to know where it is.
Can I have a question for all three of you?
Okay, let's just move on though.
No, no, but can I ask you if, if you in your presentation were privy to the discussion we had with regard to the investment, with regard to the technology component?
I was privy to that conversation because I was in attendance.
I think you were here.
Correct.
The technology, the tech.
We had heard.
The Chromebooks.
Yes, we have.
Okay.
Was that factored into your discussion tonight?
What we're presenting is around strengthening literacy for the district, not only for Millville, Blackstone as well. The whole district. And it's a literacy initiative at the elementary level that's grounded in really getting the kids reading as well as writing. And yes, Chromebooks are factored into our, our thought process as we put this forward.
But not, not in your budget.
Not in our budget. That's the tech. Correct, to be fair.
Not our budget.
But for us, we are talking as a leadership team about what that needs to look like with Dr. Thompson as well as Mrs., Mr. Himmelberger and everyone else. So, yes, we are, we are having that dialogue about how that can impact. Next week, we'll have Jesse come down and talk about, you know, what Google will look like at Millville. I can only speak for.
I'm just wondering if it impacts your budget at all and what you're going to be asking for in the upcoming year.
For, for the purposes of this presentation, just for what that's worth, if I may, I just, I want to be real quick. What we're looking to do is put in the reading specialist so that she and our instance, Mrs. Allard, would be a teacher in the teaching schedule, not a special. It should be a true reading specialist. And we've replicated that.
That's across all three.
Across all three buildings. That's exactly what I was just going to say.
What does that do to the special?
Correct. And I'm, now I'm trying to bring us back to the presentation that you were talking about. Because for, whether it's Millville or AFM or JFK, it doesn't matter where. We have the same needs because we're looking at the next set of steps in the literacy initiative that Tammy and Claire, as well as Mrs. Brown and Mrs. DeCai have spearheaded over the last few years. And while we don't have a second year training for our kindergarten and third year training for our ones and twos yet, that is going to be factored into the professional development portions. And for us, we see it as integral to get these kids to take the next step, to have the reading specialist really take hold and be a true reading specialist, helping kids who struggle, getting them the interventions at tier three. I believe there was a presentation on STARS and I do believe also Ms. Braverman brought up Read 180. These are intervention, interventions that can be brought to bear, analysis, systems of assessment that can be brought to bear to help us be more precise in our curriculum instruction and practices as teachers and educational leaders.
And the reading specialist would also be, if they're allowed to be reading specialists and not the special, they could be the go-to person support for our teachers. So, the teachers can go.
So, paint me a picture of what, and I only know the name Mrs. Allard, so I apologize to whoever you have in your, in your schools. But paint me a picture of what that looks like for next, how is, because you're saying you need to hire one FTE.
Each, right?
Each school, each school?
Yes.
But that's not the one that you already have?
That's correct. So, right now.
You have one?
We each have a reading specialist.
Correct.
And our reading specialist now conduct whole class literacy blocks that provide a prep for each teacher.
Right.
So, in my case, in Maloney, this means that Mrs. Torvi, my reading specialist, is only available seven periods a week to provide supportive reading and interventions. Because all of the other times, she is providing, she is taking your students and you have a prep.
And at JFK, lower grade students, I think it's roughly about four.
So, the new picture would look like.
Interventions.
Would, there would be two people?
Yes, because we each have a reading specialist and they provide. So, what we are proposing is, is we're saying that there is a need to hire another full-time teacher who will.
Be the special.
Take the special, if you will. And, and that will then relieve our literacy teachers of providing that special.
What they really were intended to do.
To provide what they should be doing. Yes, yes, thank you.
So, what are, what is your reading specialist doing in the seven periods right now?
My reading specialist pulls small groups of students who are, have been identified and provides those interventions. But as you can imagine, for three grade levels.
So, what is Title One doing then?
Title One is doing, Title One is doing the same. We have a lot of push-in for Title One. But, but again, remember that our reading specialists are the specialists and, and they are our go-to. They're the experts in their field.
You were asking what it might look like. I did come to a school which actually had a full-time reading specialist available. Outside of pulling small groups, they also have conversations with the teachers and they do a flow of students and prioritize, I'm going to work with these students. I get them to a certain point, they move on to another level, I'll take other students. They help with data analysis. They help with, teacher would say, well, goodness, I'm just so stuck with, I've tried all these reading comprehension strategies. I'm not sure how to get this student to understand this at a deeper level. They would go to the expert. Right now, that's, that's limited to have those conversations, to have the ability to pull those groups of students with intensive focal, focused assistance and targeted instruction. The teacher is still going to continue to do the instruction, but the reading specialist is going to take them aside and give, beef it up, so to speak, so.
Dr. Hawke, based on their numbers, would I be wrong to assume that the Millville reading special has no extra preps considering she's K to five and they have two?
She's covering, Monday through Thursday, she's flat out. She has no real opening space. Every so often, we can get it depending on if somebody has a half a sick day as opposed to not a half a sick day. But she's pretty straight out Fridays. We have the ability to get her the same setup. I mean, she pretty much gets about six blocks on the Friday, five blocks on the Friday where she can get in. And any one given week, she always has a block that's hers.
It's very similar.
So, any day she'll have her block, that's it. And then on the Fridays, she gets about five, I'd say, so.
Roughly the same.
It's not a lot. I mean, this is, this is getting, as Mrs. Brown and Mrs. DeCai have said, our reading specialist should truly be our literary, literacy expert for the building. And I have a lot of respect for her advocacy. She's, she sat with me ad nauseam. I think she's been patient. This proposal has been here more than once. It's not a want, so I want to get that out of the way now. And I, and I appreciate Mr. Wozniak bringing forward, you know, he wants the numbers. I, I got that and I get it and I agree with him. The piece is, what we're presenting is a true need for us to take the next steps when it comes to literacy at the elementary level. And I think that's, that's the key of what we're trying to present here tonight, is a true need. And I'd like our literacy expert to truly be that person who can go in and help grade four with a struggling reader who needs help or a grade three student who's trying to move to the next set of levels and really become a fluid reader as opposed to a struggling reader. So, I hope that kind of helps.
Yeah, if I could, we're not using these people effectively. You know, we are not, you know, and this was one of those budget cuts several years ago, you know, to try to keep them, you know, on, and use them. But it's, it's, I mean, they see one class, they see a class for a special once a week, don't have any time to collaborate with the teacher who's sending their students there. They don't have enough flexibility to meet with students when the need is there. They don't have enough flexibility to go in and help teachers serve student needs and they are not able to function as a literacy coach. These are incredibly talented people and we are misusing them and we're not able. Literacy is so important at the elementary level, drastically important and it's something we really need to look at.
So, I know what you're saying. I'm wrestling in my mind, are they more of a coach or are they more of a literacy specialist? Or is it kind of interchangeable?
Yeah, I, I, I see a coach more of, hey, I'm having a real problem reaching my lower level kids with comprehension. What, this is what I'm doing, I'm doing X, Y, and Z. That's not working. What else have you got for me? These people would be able to do both.
And if, and even if we look at it now, Mrs. Torvi is a coach.
Which I, I agree. I think it's definitely needed. It really is, to support the teachers.
Well, I think it's also important to support the Tammy and Claire initiative too because the teachers have to dissect now, they've been through how many years of Tammy and Claire and Teacher 21? So, I think now they have to digest those units and in order to do that, you need a reading specialist to map that out.
Yes, and I have had.
And I think it's really important to, to allow that to happen. I also think it's really important to have a reading specialist for a number of different reasons. So, the $52,000 that's in here for that FTE, I mean, the FTE to be determined is really so that they can do what they should be designed to do now that we have all these things in place. We have the book closet, we have the, the units from Teacher 21, we have the teachers that are ready and we just need to support them in that way. I mean, right now, they're just taking a special and I don't think we're using them. I agree, I don't think we're using them to the benefit that we could be using them. I know with my reading specialist, I go right to her and I say, I need A, B, and C, and she has it. We conference, she has small groups, it's a number of different things. So, I definitely think it's.
Yeah. For, for, to your point, if I may, real quick, three to five, grades three to five have had Tammy and Claire, you know, three years now. So, it's about them owning it. It really is. It's about them owning it and taking hold of it and driving as the professionals that they are in those grades. K has only had one year and this, you know, just like anything you do in your first year, I think is dissonance and they're trying really hard to get their arms around it. I don't want to speak for, for JFK, but for us, I really want them to know it's okay if you fall down, get back up. That's why they're here. That's why Claire comes in and does what she does. And in one and two, it's a little better because they're in their second year. But with three to five, it's time to phase that area of professional development offline. And I don't mean to take from Dr. Thompson and some of the things he's spoken to earlier, but I think it's important that we do that. And that's where this, you know, reallocation from, say, PPD in terms of the money and the monetary component, reallocating some of that money over to this position and the FTE where requesting and is needed so that we can really carry our literacy initiative forward properly as a district. It is about using our personnel and their expertise properly.
The intent was never to have this PD go on forever. It, it was to, to educate our teachers and, and be able to take what they've learned and grow upon it as a professional community.
So, so it sounds like, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the needs between, in the elementary levels are to continue with the literacy initiative, K to two, but the FTE, the real big thing is the reading specialist being a reading specialist and not a special. So, that's one big need with a cost to it. The other big, the other need to, that has a cost to it is a technology piece? It says need to support technology integration.
That comes out of what?
Is that the second, is that the second need?
Well, we've got the STAR two though.
But those are all handled out of.
The STAR program though, that was presented as a whole, right? As a whole umbrella from K to 12. So, I don't know if that, that's obviously part of.
And I, and I get that, but I guess, I guess, yes, it was presented as a whole package and we need to expand and go K to 12 or go to the younger. But I guess from a school committee perspective, and I know we have to make these tough decisions and that's what we're hired, elected, whatever, to do, but it's the same question I asked the, the middle school and high school principal last time. It comes down to priority. It comes down, it comes down to need, but it comes down to priority. You know, what is, if you had to choose, you know, we, we have seen technology, we have seen the STAR program. We have seen, we know that there is a need to address salaries across the district. We, we now have reading specialists. How do you, how would you prioritize them? If you had, if you had to choose, if it came down to, you have to draw the bottom line.
We asked the same question to the high school and the middle school, just to fear warn you.
We can't chop it off. You know, we can't give you half of a reading specialist, or maybe we can, I don't know. But, you know, how do you, what, what is your real need? What is it? Is it a STAR program that helps you assess the students and, and move from there? Is it technology in the classroom? Is it reading? What, what you're seeing day to day, where would you put, where would you put your money?
I guess my answer to you would be if they were all separate, it would probably be easier to prioritize, but they all are so intertwined and it's so, it's so hard to break them apart.
And I get that.
And they're such a gaping need.
But there's also limited dollar amounts.
I, I understand. So, you know, from my, my seat as an elementary principal, I would tell you that. I don't, maybe that's your decision as committee.
That's why she's asking.
That's how the middle school answered.
That's why she's asking.
But I, I'm just saying that from my seat, I am looking at, you know, and, and I know that, that to sit here and provide you with a wish list is really a waste of your time, our time, and, and the members of our towns.
This is not a wish.
So, this is something especially for the literacy teachers. This is my sixth year. This is six years without a reading specialist.
And that's really unheard of if you think about districts across Massachusetts. Their reading specialists are reading specialists. They're not a special. And then when you look at the technology needs, I mean, again, Massachusetts is moving towards PARCC. Put that aside. Everything is technology integrated. A lot of the up and coming research-based techniques, a lot of the assessments. I can tell you now at the lower grades, we really do not have a wonderful objective assessment system. It's, it's really touch and go. So, it is integrated. We need the technology, we need the STARS and we need the reading specialist. The reading specialist we've needed. I, I, that was the first shock I felt when I came here, is the reading specialist does what? It's, it's shocking. It's unheard of. And, and this is my fifth year here and I guess it happened six years ago. So, we really need to look at those priorities and they are intertwined. And that's something, it's worth looking at, how are you going to, how are you going to make it happen for us, I guess?
So, you're not helping them.
So, for what, to what we're saying here, I, I, what I wanted to add is, at some point, we've got to start putting our money into the general education side of the ledger, in fairness, because if not, you're going to be putting it on the other side of the ledger in a special education. And I don't mean that with any disrespect as somebody who's the former director. I can speak from experience and I've said it in this seat before. We need to put our money on the other side of the ledger so that the interventions that are happening at tier one in the general education setting are our best practices, are happening with all our educators. And then at tier two, when we go to small group and smaller work, it's more precise. And to get that done, we need tools. So, something as simple as STARS, at $23 a student is, has been put into the budget so you have a number to plug for what Millville or JFK or AFM need. That's to help you kind of get your arms around the budgetary or the finance component. But to be fair, these things are all tied together and we've cut, 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 cut for years. You know, the end game for me is, you, we're telling you what we need, you tell us what we can have. And at the end of the day, we'll, we'll work with what we have and make it work, but we've done that. We've done that for quite a while. And, you know, I, I don't want to throw money to the other side of the ledger. I want it for all the kids and, and most importantly, special ed, general ed, 504, ELL, doesn't matter. They're our kids. So, you know, the dollar amount that's tied back, it's, it's, you know, something we've got to, you have to realize, we've really worked hard to come up with a game plan and a strategy as a leadership team to make this work. Even being creative with how to create PLC time, which is in this presentation.
Could you move on to that?
We've, we've worked hard to come up with a, a game plan for you so that we can be hopefully cost-effective in rolling that out. Because at this point, we don't even have time to address. address, special education has no time to meet in sped management, grade level teams, and talk about what's going on across the board. That's unacceptable. You have a person in speech or OT and PT who's trying to mitigate needs, they need to talk to the other providers about what's going on with that child. Unheard of. And PLC time, I don't care what you call it, that time is essential for all the teachers on a grade level, all right? So you can horizontally and vertically align curriculum, instruction, and assessment practices, everything. We're not going to improve if we don't start working and thinking differently and in this way. So that's what this proposal is.
So when is that being done, right now?
Well, the proposal you have here tonight and the next phase that is being rolled out right now, and I apologize, I lost my, get it back up here, we're looking at trying to create a collaborative professional time. And to do that, what we're, what we're asking is that the professionals, the teachers, be given time during recess with the hiring of two recess monitors. This is about as popular, I'm sure, as you can get. In other words, it's not. But to be fair, we're trying to carve time out so that we can start doing that teamwork and grade level work. So our request here, as you see, is to hire two recess monitors for two days a week, and I'm speaking for Mill...
Two hours a day.
Sorry, two hours a day.
Oh, you said two days a week.
Five days a week. No, thanks, we'll correct it.
Thanks. Two hours a day at each building. The allocation, when you map that all out, is about $11,400 for both recess monitors.
Is it each or for both?
Three.
Per building.
Per building.
Per building.
Two people divided by...
Per building.
Right, three buildings.
What that would afford us...
Six grand a person?
Six.
A bit less.
Okay.
Now, what that would afford us is the ability to hire recess monitors and create the ability to establish collaborative professional time. And we have outstanding professionals in our faculty and our staff, so it's about creating time for them to be collaborative and work together 30 minutes daily. This time, as is written right here in black and white, would basically be used for general ed, special ed, and any ESL and any other needs that arise, and really help us mitigate needs in real time as opposed to trying to do triage with tourniquets at the 11th hour. Have we ever had that before, recess monitors before? I'm trying to think back, I think we did, didn't we?
I have not.
We had lunch during our time.
Separate from the staff?
No.
See, because this is separate from the new, so we've never had additional body, why can't we combine that with something?
Well, I just, tell me what it's going to look like, Dr. Hawey in Millville, since there's only an hour of recess?
Yeah, well, in this instance, the half hour would be dedicated to the grade level getting together, working with special education and others to truly collaborate about what's happening with students. And if you think of the medical model, in like a hospital, you have case conferencing, they go, they visit the patient, same thing here, you bring a case forward, you bring a student forward, this student's struggling in reading, and you talk about what's going on with that child. And you actually get to work on Tier Two, Tier Three, tiered interventions that make sense based on the assessments and the tools that have been presented by others prior to myself. But that time would allow our professionals, our teachers and faculty and staff to work together in that half hour, as opposed to doing a recess, they would be doing PLC time or collaborative planning time.
So that's not happening right now?
No, we have no time in our schedule right now.
Happens on the fly, it's happening, but it's almost like in passing, it's, the teachers would have to come in, I've seen them even, they're so dedicated, they're coming in before work hours, technically they should be happening during their work hours, but that's what they're opting to do because they want to do what's best for the children. During this recess time, there is always someone missing from the team because they're doing recess duty. Also, our specialists, everyone has a recess duty, so our specialists are also going out and our specialists are going into scheduled RTI times without any opportunity to sit down with teachers and talk about what it is they're doing, how they can support kids. So those conversations aren't, they are, they are not happening unless they're happening on the fly, before or after school. And the specialists, you have to keep in mind, see every single child in the building. So when you have a child who's coming in, they don't speak any English, they're not able to get much guidance from the ESL teacher because their schedules don't match, because they're all teaching at the same time. So that gives you a vision of how out tricky this can be, so we really need that time for professional collaboration, allowing the staff so that you can have all the hard work that they're doing carried out throughout the day.
Could you tell me what we look like for kindergarten aides in next year's projection?
We have asked for full-time kindergarten aides for next year because that is really essential. We found out this year that just getting everything in with the aides and how much more service that the kindergarten teachers can deliver is essential, because we've not only doing the literacy initiative, but you also start math in kindergarten, and that builds the foundation for upper grades, and that takes time as well. And what the teachers are telling me, like, Versha, if I had the aide there, they could, we could do more center work, targeted instruction with the children.
So times five?
Times five, in my building, yes, five full-time aides, and you would need...
Two.
Right.
For us, it's, we have exactly what Blackstone has currently, one in each room, for the two rooms, so there's two, and right now...
Are you looking at full-time or just leaving them the way they are?
You know, my father raised me to believe what you do for one, you do for the other, so if Blackstone's getting full-time, Millville's going to be asking for the same darn thing.
So the numbers, the numbers are the same in Blackstone?
Well, in this instance, what I'm saying is each teacher...
No, I'm not talking about aides, I'm talking about population.
Yeah.
So class size.
Yeah, by class size.
Okay, because some of your class sizes are a lot smaller, too.
And, you know...
And it's the way that it, it's the way that it is, but I'm just, I'm going off of your, I'm just going off of your comment.
You're right.
But the kids are the same age and having that group, whatever number is, having that extra adult in the room...
But I'm telling you, as a teacher right now, with 12 in a class versus 25 in a class, there's a huge difference.
We have 22, 23.
Huge difference.
At 23 right now, no, we wouldn't be seeing that request.
But what I'm saying is, if there's 23, if there's 23 kindergartners or 24 kindergartners in Blackstone and an aide, and there's 14 kindergartners in Millville...
And no aide.
And no aide, and no aide.
That's not fair.
Okay, I disagree.
They're all the same age kids and you need that support.
That's why they make chocolate and vanilla.
That's right.
The end, the end of the day...
I was just going, I was just going based on what you just said.
Ice cream?
I'm with you, Wendy.
Listen, as far as, as far as what I see...
Telling you, I was in a fifth grade class the other day in Franklin with 12 kids, I have 25 kids, I went to observe a 12...
Vacation, did you go to lunch?
It was a vacation, it was a vacation, and I said the whole way back, it's not fair.
Well, it's four...
But I dealt with it, as I do every day.
What I would say is, as a region, that is something that we need to look at.
Yeah.
And I would leave it at that right now. But going forward, I do expect the numbers to climb, as I mentioned earlier also, and I'm, I'm really proud of the work we're doing.
Are we going to be looking at scheduling, though, and not running into what we ran into this time when we tried to move the kindergarten aides up a couple hours and we kind of ran into the cafeteria and them doing cafeteria duty versus...
Well, being full-time is not going to be a...
Okay, I just want to make sure we think about that when we...
I think full-time fixes...
Good feedback, thank you.
So is there anything else that...
I think it covered every following needs.
There you go, that's what I think. There you go.
I was just making a joke, but we could, the kindergartners could be the recess monitors, I just, I just saved the region $30,000.
There you go.
I'm kidding, that was another joke, people. Glad to be back.
But they could.
The only other thing I have was related to the items Mr. Hemelberger brought forward earlier in the year about, the facility itself has had its quirks with the roofs, different things, so we're working with the Board of Selectmen and other entities of the town to kind of iron that out and get some things streamlined with regard to punch listing the roof project, getting that done, and any other items that the insurance community needs to clean up and address as well. And I just, I don't want that lost, but we have a meeting tomorrow, for instance, we're going to walk the facility and we're going to be working with the community to get these things addressed in a timely manner.
Thank you for keeping up, Wendy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, it was good to see you all.
Thank you, great job.
See you too, have a good evening.
Thanks.
Thank you all very much, I really appreciate the dedication and the commitment that we have across the district and all of our staff. I just wanted to give everybody a brief update, this is an exciting and fun time of year for those of us who follow the state budget, which was released in the House One Form yesterday. Many, many things are in play, January, February, March, and April into May. The governor typically comes out with a rather conservative budget, and his promise was that Chapter 70 would be increasing by as much as the state revenues have increased. State revenues increased at 4.3%, Chapter 70 across the state was funded at 1.6%. So a four and a half billion dollar account that covers the main source of funding for all of our schools in our districts receives $72 million. So we hope that when the House looks at that, that they will typically increase it, and then when the Senate has the final adjudication, they also have the best revenue information because they look at it typically in May. So they have the final state revenue projections in hand. The governor also mentioned that when he was campaigning that there would be no new taxes, and his budget reflects that, and he looks at the economic growth of the Commonwealth generating about a billion dollars of additional revenue. That, however, is offset by the fixed costs that the Commonwealth is incurring around the debt service, around the mass health, and around the pensions. So that is projected to be about a billion and a half, so given the fact that there's no additional tax revenue, the state budget has to absorb about a $500 million gap in what is projected to be additional growth revenue compared with what is already in the budget for fixed costs. So it'll be interesting to see how that moves through. Our Chapter 70 preliminary number is very, very close to last year, within $100,000 of last year's number, 10.7. So we'll wait and see how that plays out as we go through over the next several months. There was some good news on the kindergarten grant, which is being revamped by the current administration, to the tune of for full-day, full-day kindergartens that do not charge tuition, there would be a K grant of $350 per student. So, you know, we have, if we have 100, that's $35,000, if we have 150, that's $52,000. So, and we have right now about 130, so...
How does that compare to the grant we've received?
It'll be similar, similar, but we were operating under the information that there would be no K grants for this coming year, so I applaud the administration for putting in a formula. Again, it only is for full-day K and it's only for non-tuitions.
We meet both of those.
Yes, we do, and we will look forward to Wendy and I constructing the budget with the analysis to back everything up and have that to you very soon. Thank you.
Alan, can I just add one thing to that? Aaron, can I? I sent out an email to everybody, I think I did, I did.
Chapter 70?
Well, I did that, but there was something from, I got from the Mass Association of Regional Schools, that they're asking all their school committees to make a motion and vote on tonight, because, I'm just going to read it if I could. So they're asking us at our meeting to, what the legislature is trying to do right now is try to add some additional language around regional transportation. They're trying to add just three words, okay, to the law, which, which is three words that benefit them very much, the three words are "subject to appropriation," which to me says, well, if we have it, we'll give it to you, if we don't, we don't. And the Mass Association of Regional Schools are asking each of the school committee, regional school committees, to take this up, someone make a motion that you're opposed to them doing that, and then therefore, then taking the next step in emailing our legislators and saying that. So I'm going to make a motion, if that's okay, Aaron, that the Blackstone Nova Regional School District opposes the provisions of Section 173 of HD 4338, which says, which says the following, adding the three words to the regional transportation verbiage, which is "subject to appropriation." I'm adamantly opposed to it because they haven't held their word to the regional transportation when they, the law says that they're going to fund 100% of it, and they've never done that in the decades that, and just so the public knows, regional schools have to supply a bus seat to everybody, that's what the law says. And what they, what they were talking about was that, we'll reimburse you. So a Bellingham or an Oxbridge, they don't get reimbursement because they're not required to, they can charge families if they want, they can reduce the bus and say, well, if you work, if you live five miles from school, that's when we'll maybe send you a bus. Franklin does the same thing, Franklin charges for buses. So the issue here is, the regional schools have to abide by the current law, which says, you got to have a bus seat for everybody, and that's a lot of money. So now if they're going to play games with adding three words, "subject to appropriation," that's going to be, they're really up in arms about that. So I'm going to make the motion that we take a vote that we're opposed to that.
Motion made by Bill, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jane.
And so any further discussion, we can put this in the minutes, and I would recommend everybody call, emailing their legislators, saying such that we're opposed to that, because they're not holding their end of the bargain. If they want to get rid of the law, then it gives us a lot of, a lot of leeway in terms of how we manage our buses. Right now, we have zero ways to manage it, so...
Yeah, I'd like to echo that, like, what we get a lot of is parents say, oh my gosh, I saw a bus go by, I was half-filled, and then I went by the school and there was an unbelievable traffic jam, all the parents dropping their kids off. If we were in another town, we could cut some of those buses, or we could say, all right, if you're behind a mile, a mile and a half, whatever, there's a bus you, otherwise. But really, if the kids live across the street from the school, we have to provide a seat on a bus for that kid, whether it's used or not, and where our hands are really tied, we can't charge, we can't cut, we can't do anything like that. So, yeah, I think, I would agree with you, Bill, I think we should approve that.
Any other discussion?
Maybe we could draft a legislative note or something and then ask people to, you know, use our social media, whatever, but to send it off, you know, put the addresses and...
I'm happy to write something up, send it out to everybody, and then maybe tweeting it out or something, or blogging it on our Facebook page, all the schools and whatnot, and then they could do that, so we can definitely do that.
That'd be great.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any approves?
And the only other thing, Aaron, is the Mass Association of Regional Schools, which they have a new executive director from the fall, an old friend of ours, Perry Davis, who's their executive director now, who's leading the charge against this, they're having a meeting in a couple of weeks that, I don't know, do you go to that?
February 9th, yeah.
Yeah, February 9th, okay. And they're going to be talking about the budget and regional school budget and so forth, so, okay.
And that's all.
Thank you.
That's it?
That's all, yeah.
And moving on, our next public forum, and school committee forum.
I was just wondering if there's an update on the JFK fence playground?
We have received back an alternative based upon whether or not we have a regional agreement that goes before the towns. If pre-K were ever to go to JFK, we would need to have a completely enclosed playground, it would only need to be a four-foot fence, it could be black and it would be much smaller, but it would serve the purpose, so that's an alternative, and we will wait to see where that goes, but we could do either or. So if, in fact, we wanted to preserve that as a possible pre-K eventually, then we would just circle and enclose the playground.
And related to that, I was going to ask the principals that tonight, but I know that was not the focus of tonight's meeting, is, do they have an opinion on this? Have they said yea or nay?
I don't know.
If they think fences warranted or not, what's their opinion?
I don't want to speak for them, but I also know that the, to be able to completely enclose the playground area would be ideal. enclose the playground area would be ideal.
Yeah. I have nothing additional. John, anything?
No, I'm all set.
Nothing?
I'm good.
And I think I'm good too. Dave, we didn't have you on the agenda, but did you have anything?
Nope. That's why I'm not on the agenda.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't because we...
Nope. Not forgotten. Don't worry.
So our upcoming meeting, Thursday, February 11th. Do you have a ledger in front of us?
You will have a full budget with all details, with supporting documentation.
Okay. Is there any specific requests that anyone wants pointed out on February 11th? Do you want like two columns of last year, this year?
Well, yeah, I, I mean, I would like 15...
You're going to see four, you're going to see three or four years of history.